Good evening and welcome to everyone to the Town of Sydney Regular Committee of the Whole Meeting for Tuesday, April the 19th, 2022. I am the Chair this evening, Barbara Fallow, and I'd like to welcome my fellow committee members and members of staff who are present and also members of the audience. It's kind of nice to see more than nothing, never mind one or two. So, welcome to everybody and also welcome to everybody who will be watching live or watching the meeting later on. I would also like to, at this point, well, respectfully acknowledge that we're meeting this evening in the traditional territory of the Van Dijk people and thank them for sharing these lands with us. Committee, we've got five extra pieces of correspondence that came as late admissions. There are four pieces that go under 7AII and one that'll go under 7C. If I can get approval of the amended agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as amended.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all in favor, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have public participation and if there is anybody who would like to speak, there are three items, development applications on the agenda, and they all have public participation opportunities. So if you're speaking to one of those, you may wait, but if there's something else you'd like to address in general, you're welcome to come up to the mic. And seeing no one, I will close the public participation. And next, we have the, I need approval of the minutes for the Regular Committee of the Whole Meeting of April 4th, 2022. Second?
Second.
All in favor, motion carries. And we have a recommendation. No, sorry, the minutes are approved, sorry. And then we go to item number seven, which is development applications. And under 7A, we have development permit application number DP 100832 and development variance application number DV 100314 at 9700 Third Street. And this is to relax the parking bylaw requirements for a number of spaces in order to construct a four-story mixed-use commercial residential development consisting of ground floor, studio, office space, and one dwelling unit. And we have a presentation from the applicant, Mr. Michael Moody, who is the architect, and I believe he is on Zoom for us, is he? Or is he in?
He should be on Zoom.
And Mr. Moody, you're not in the room, I take it. Okay, shall we move this one and go on to the next one then? Next is 7B, which is the development variance permit application number DV 100316 at 9376 Lockside Drive. It's to reduce rear setback for two lots in a proposed four-lot subdivision. And we have a presentation from the applicant, Russ Collins, designer, and Louis Horvath and Dallas Hutchison, I believe, and they are on Zoom. If we can bring them in, please. Good evening, Mr. Horvath. We still have two more. Good evening, Mr. Collins, and good evening, Mr. Hutchison. The floor is yours. You have 10 minutes. Please go, go ahead.
Sure. Good evening, committee members. My name's Louis Horvath. I'm with Zebra Design. Also with me tonight here is Mr. Russ Collins of Zebra Design and Dallas Hutchison, our clients. Before you is a proposal for a four-lot subdivision. The subdivision will consist of three duplex lots and one single-family home. The lot has 35 trees, 24 are protected by this Town of Sydney's tree preservation bylaw. We have provided an example of how three duplexes in a single-family home can be built on these lots in a sensitive way that protects most of the protected trees. The way we are able to protect those trees is by asking for two rear lot setback variances for lots one and four. We feel that this is a small request which allows the majority of protected trees to remain. All other aspects of the R2 zone are being met with this proposal. Also, as is mentioned in the report from Sydney Planning Staff, the development is also consistent with the official community plan. We also feel that the housing crisis that we see all around B.C., this development will help provide more housing in Sydney, yet in a modest manner. Our clients and Zebra's staff have appreciated the help and guidance through this process so far. We feel that this is a positive development that is in keeping with the past projects nearby and will be added asset to the Town of Sydney. We hope that you will be able to support sending this project forward to public hearing. Thank you, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. So shall we go to public participation first or allow council to ask questions at this time, Mr. Humble?
If the committee so desires, they can ask questions and then have the proponent and then have public participation directly after that, if that works.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'll open it up to committee. Counselor O'Keefe, Mayor McNeil Smith after that.
Thank you for that and thank you for the information that you've provided. What I'm wondering is, back in 2020, you brought this proposal to us and we provided a variance, and I'm just wondering, is there any significant difference between what was approved then and now? And were the trees not part of the consideration in the first place? Just curious about that.
Back in 2020, I believe the trees were part of the condition there. Now, the lot conditions have changed slightly from what I believe the original proposal was, meaning that we've relocated some of the buildings slightly to alleviate any issues with the trees, particularly along Lockside Drive and at the rear near Frost Avenue. So I can't speak to the entire project back in 2020, but we do have this project here before us which does protect these trees as much as possible.
Okay, that's fine.
Thanks. Thank you. Mayor McNeil Smith? Oh, sorry. Ms. Verhagen, did you wish to address this?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair to all members, the previous variance was a request to council to waive the frontage requirement for how the amount of perimeter of each property fronting onto the street. So it wasn't a variance for setback, it was to waive the amount of property onto the street for the two lots fronting onto Frost Avenue.
Thank you. Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the presenters. My question is, the aspects of the development are submitted to us and in our council package and available to the public, yet we know that you have not yet submitted a development permit, you're just submitting a development variance permit application. Can you indicate why you haven't submitted a development permit? And if the variance was approved, what would be the timing for you to bring that forward? I see Mr. Humble may wish to...
Mr. Humble, please.
Yeah, thank you, through the chair. So this is not a development permit area for single-family residential, it's not a high-density project, so maybe Ms. Verhagen can clarify, but I don't believe a development permit is required.
Ms. Verhagen?
Yes, that's correct. No development permit would be required.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have a follow-up?
That's fine, thank you.
Any other questions from committee? Counselor Garnett? Nope. I do have a question. As I'm reading through the staff report, it's talking about 35 trees and 24 of which are protected. If my count is correct, as I'm reading through the report, there are going to be seven trees removed, four of which are protected, is that correct? And that's either to staff or the proponents, whoever has the answer for that.
I believe there was an additional tree that was added in late in the process. This would be tree number 1007. It has a crack in it and it's very damaged. It's slated for removal. So we end up with 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 trees that are by law protected.
That are protected, okay, okay, six trees, thank you. Thank you, I do have a question later on to staff, so that'll be fine. If no other questions from committee, then I will close this portion and open it up to public participation. And if anybody would like to speak to this, please step up to the podium and press the button for the mic, and you may speak or ask your questions. I'll ask one more time if there's anybody who'd like to speak to this. Seeing none, I will close public participation. And committee, we have a recommendation in front of us. Where would you like to go with this?
Move that owners and tenants in occupation of property within 75 meters, that's 246 feet of 9376 Lockside Drive, be notified regarding development variance application number DV 100316 to vary the required minimum rear setback for proposed lots 1 and 2, and that any written correspondence received be forwarded to council at the time of consideration of approval of the variance.
You said 1 and 2, I believe it's lots...
Sorry, 1 and 4.
Okay, second?
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Garnett?
It's appropriate to ask a question of staff at this time, through you and staff. Just for clarification purposes and to get the numbers correct, so there's 24 protected trees on the property. If you could comment on how many trees, if the variance is granted, how many of the protected trees will remain? And if it wasn't granted, how many of the protected trees would remain?
Through the chair to Counselor Garnett, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, and it could change through the development of the civil plan to service the subdivision. We are working with the applicant to ensure minimal tree loss, and any trees that would be removed would be done, would be removed through the tree removal permit process. They wouldn't be approved by this variance application. The variance here is just to reduce the rear setback on lots 1 and 4, but looking at the plan, I'm just going to pull it up here, reducing the rear setback on proposed lot 4 would result in the removal of that tree 1007 in kind of the northwest area of proposed lot 4. But as the applicant indicated, the Arborist report did comment that that tree does have some structural damage to it, so it would likely have to come out anyway. The purpose of these variances is to preserve the larger protected Douglas fir trees. The sighting of the buildings, the future duplexes on lots 3 and 4, would see the removal of two protected trees, trees 1004 and 1005, but those are right in the middle of the building envelope. So yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have an exact number right now, but it's very close to what was indicated.
Yeah, thank you. No, I'm just trying to get, not having specific numbers, that would have been helpful, but just basically because the whole premise seems to be around protected trees within the staff report, that providing the variance will save more of the protected trees, that seems to be the impetus, and am I understanding that correct?
Yes, that is the purpose of their request.
Great, thank you. Thank you, staff, thank you, Chair.
Counselor O'Keefe?
Thank you. Just to build on Counselor Garnett's point, I'm going to approve this move forward, but when it comes back to council for final approval, I would like to know the difference between, if we're being asked to provide a variance based on the number of trees that will be saved, I'd just like to know what that is, so.
If I could speak to that?
Okay.
If the variance is not approved, then it would not allow as much critical root zone area around the protected Douglas fir trees along Lockside Drive, along, in the front yards of lots 3 and 4. And it would also result in a much tighter distance or a shorter distance between the grove of protected trees at the west end of lot 2. You can see there's quite a cluster of trees that is currently being protected, sorry, proposed lot 1 and lot 2. If the building envelope of lot 1 is not shifted to the rear as they're proposing to do and reduce that back setback, then the building would be much closer to that grove of trees, and it would be very difficult to retain as many as they are proposing to.
Ms. Verhagen, I do have a question for you regarding this. So we're going from one small footprint to four far larger footprints, and the trees have lived there unencumbered. Has there been anything through the Arborist report to talk about the survivability of the trees in this area that is now going to be compromised with the housing footprint? And also, is there any adjustment going to be made for perhaps drainage now that there's going to be fewer trees and greater airage of coverage?
Yes, the Arborist report does speak to that, and that's why the proposed layout is proposed, is to minimize the impact of driveways and building footprints on those critical root zones of the protected trees and leave the largest allowable space around those three larger fir trees in the front and also the grove of trees in the back. So the Arborist has commented about that.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further questions from committee, then I will call the vote, all in favor, opposed, none opposed, motion carries. Thank you. And I see on the screen, thank you very much, gentlemen, appreciate your time and your presentation this evening, and look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I see on the list that Mr. Moody has joined us, so if we can now go back to 7A. Mr. Moody, are you there?
I am, thank you very much. I apologize.
Welcome, I missed you a little bit earlier, so we went ahead on the agenda. But the floor is yours now, you have 10 minutes. Your video is missing.
Oh, okay, let's try to read that, start video.
We'd like to see if we can.
I'm trying to find it here, start video. Is that better?
Thank you, good evening.
Okay, good evening. Hope you're all doing well. My apologies for, I think I overestimated how long that first part of the agenda was going to take. We have a project at 9703rd Street. It's a bit of an orphaned lot at the end of the block. It comprises a three-level residence, approximately 3900 square feet, above an art gallery at the main floor. The art gallery is accessed off the corner of Oakville and Third through a little garden area that will have sculptures in it by the owners. And the residence is accessed right off Oakville or through a door off the carport at the back. So the ground floor also has areas for storage of bikes and art pieces, and it also has a mechanical room as well. It's a very contemporary design, which was through the wishes of the owner, and I think it's in keeping with some of the more recent developments in the downtown core. It's primarily a, we chose to go with a stucco finish instead of hardy panel. It gives a much finer-looking texture, and it's contrasted with the vertical corrugated metal and the horizontal beams and columns. The art gallery has access, like I said, through the main floor and the residence as well, and there's an elevator, which is the prominent feature on the Oakville Street that accesses the upper levels for the owners. So the main, well, the second level of the building has the dining room, kitchen, and living room of the residence. Half a level up from that, it's a split level, is a guest room and a den. And the uppermost level has the master bedroom, en suite, and that large deck. It's a very tight site, and we are asking for a variance of one parking space. The footprint of the building itself is only about 1,000 square feet, and with the new parking regulations, including the maneuvering aisle dimensions and the fact that we have to provide two accessible parking spaces, it's just the way it works out, which share a five-foot-wide access aisle, we just, there's just no way to fit another parking stall on there. Transportation wouldn't allow the cars to back off onto Oakville, so they have to have that maneuvering aisle on the site. And it's because of that reason we have to ask for a variance of just one spot. It's a pretty straightforward project, I think, like to give credit to the planners for helping us out on this. It was a very concise description in their report that you have, and I believe you also have the three-page letter that we sent, which further explains the requirement for the parking relaxation. So I think with that said, we'll open up any questions you might have.
Thank you. I open up to committee. Counselor Garnett?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Moody, for your presentation. Just a couple of questions, if I may. With regards to the accessible parking on the back, is that meant to be for visitors of the art gallery/studio, or is that meant to be for the residents of the building?
There's one each, basically, yes.
Okay. The other question is, the home that's currently occupying that space, it seems to be that there's somebody living there, is that, do you know if that's owned or rented?
That's, the owners are renting that to their son, I believe, and his family.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Counselor O'Keefe?
Thank you, yeah, a few questions. So I'm just, I'm trying to get a better understanding of how the entire space is going to be used. Is the owner also the, going to be living in the residential area and operating?
The owners of the art gallery are going to be living above it, so they'll be living there and operating the gallery.
Okay, and I guess, yeah, that's what I wondered. So I wondered, like, when I look at the floor plan, for a single-family resident, it's huge. You know, there's seating for eight people at the dining room table and another four at the counter, huge amount of space, accommodation for guest rooms, for offices. So is it anticipated that it's more of a live-work sort of space for them then, operating the business out of that, out of those three stories, or?
I think that would be a fair assessment, yes. I can't really comment as to the number of, you know, spaces at the dining table. They may like to entertain a lot, but yeah, it is a complex floor plan, having the split level. Actually, you have your drawings in front of you, if you look at the, I think, SK06 would be a good one to explain it, which is the south elevation facing Oakville.
Okay.
So you can see there's a deck there that's half a level up from the second floor, so the main living level is a split level, so the living room, dining room, kitchen are on the second floor, and then there's a half level up to the guest room and den. And then you go up another flight to the master bedroom and en suite and deck.
Okay, so I'm kind of getting the impression that the big space, the big living area, the two decks would be, as you said, you indicated that they'd like to entertain, whether this would be space that they would use when they're having maybe an opening in the gallery, that they would be entertaining gallery guests in the upper floors of the, is that kind of what's envisioned, or?
I think if it's okay, I would pass this question on to the owner, who should be in attendance there. Are you okay with that, Andrew?
Thank you, please. Press the button, turn the mic on, please.
Good evening. My name's Andrew Lowen, and my wife, Lori Lowen, is here as well.
Welcome.
And we're absolutely thrilled with the prospect of having a gallery and studio with our residents above it. And there is, it's a full separation. The bottom floor is fully commercial, being office space and gallery. We also have a engineering business that designs equipment for police departments, and that will be used as part of the office space in the back. And then all of the floors above is just going to be our residence. We have a lot of family in the area and grandchildren, and they'll be coming over. So we're thrilled with the prospect of moving what we have in the downtown Victoria area out to Sydney and living in this community and conducting our business here.
Thank you very much for that explanation, appreciate that. Counselor O'Keefe?
Yes, thank you for that. I was trying to get a better understanding of the use of the building, so that helps. So my concern is a little bit about the parking. So my understanding is that, so out of the four spaces, there's one that would be allocated to the residential dwelling. There won't be any allocated to the office, and then the one space would be for the retail. So I guess my concern is a couple things. So first of all, my understanding is the two spaces that will be provided are accessible spaces.
Yes.
So able-bodied people, I presume, will come to the gallery, will come to the engineering business, visitors will, and grandkids will come to visit. Where do you anticipate that they will park?
Well, I would anticipate that there's street parking on Third, is there not?
So you would, so they would be, you would be encouraging them to park in the surrounding residential area?
Well, I'm assuming if the family came to visit, it would be, the gallery would not be open in the evening time, so I think that would free up the one for guests of the residents in the evening.
Sorry, what would be freed up?
Well, the gallery wouldn't be open during the evenings, so if family came to visit, they would be able to access that stall, the additional stall there.
Okay, so but during business hours, there's really no parking being provided for the business or really the residents?
There's just the two stalls available, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's a concern for me. And I get, you mentioned that you looked at the OCP and how this complied with this. Some of the, one of the things I noticed in our OCP for the downtown is that it talks about, in our mixed-use developments, having, wanting to have more density above commercial units, and this isn't really providing that additional density that we would be looking for, is that something you considered at all?
On a lot, well, it's, because it is a gallery that's operated by the owners, additional density really wasn't in the cards, and in fact, on such a tight site, any additional density would just exacerbate the parking requirements as well. It's hard to get parking for this development, let alone any denser development.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Keefe. Any other questions from committee? Then I thank you very much, Mr. Moody. We'll now open it up for public participation. If anybody would like to address this proposal, you're welcome to come up to the mic. Please give us your name and your address.
Thank you, yes, I'm Timothy Waters. I live at 2440 Orchard Avenue, and it's a neat little project. I like Mr. Moody's presentation, I can see why you'd be excited about the project, but if only life... But if only life were that easy. And the reason I say that is because my condo is on the ground floor, the most eastward condo. And when I viewed it, I'm part owner, when I first viewed it, it was a morning viewing and that's what sold me. The sun coming in the windows, I envisioned sitting out on the patio with a little coffee in the morning. Talk about mental health medicine. I wake up to this every morning and I love it and it's, it's the one, it's the reason why I would never purchase a northerly-facing dwelling. So unfortunately, I'm, I'm just given a hashed-out area here. When I envision a, a building consuming the entire space, I can't imagine that that, that morning sun that really caused me to purchase the condo or, or part thereof would be visible until, I'm not too sure what time, maybe eleven in the morning, perhaps lunchtime. That would really decrease, you know, while the assessment may not change, it's the qualitative value of that particular space. I didn't envision that, 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 that selling point would one day be threatened. So I, I love the idea of, of an art gallery. I, I love the notion of more neighbors. I'm a big advocate of, of "love your neighbor." In fact, the young lady here, when she first came in, she sat down right in front of me and then said, "Oh, excuse me," and moved off to the side. And I thought, now there's a relic of a time gone by when "love your neighbor" was the primary rule. I would hope that it is still alive to some degree. I know there are, there is a precedent set in various places around the world, such as the air rights that you have in California where you can't just diminish a neighbor's property value and enclosing. I'm not too sure what, what else to say aside from, it kind of saddens my heart that the, the primary selling point for myself would be removed. And I can't imagine that that would be a selling point for that good qualitative value if I wanted to sell the, my portion of the condo in the future. So I don't know, I don't know if, like in California and different places, if, if money is, if money is the bottom line, if there's compensation offered for diminishing the value.
I'm just going to interrupt you there, sir. We're really at this point looking if there's something that you wanted to know from the architect or to put into our consideration, but you're going off, a bit off of the subject for this. So if I can ask you to sort of summarize now and, and close your comments for our next speaker.
Okay, well, thank you. Yes, the footprint, the architect noted it would be a thousand-square-foot footprint. Will that, will the building be consuming the entire space or oriented to the westerly portion of the property?
Mr. Moody, would you like to address that?
Yes, the, the building, because of the parking requirements, is about almost forty feet from the west property line, which leaves approximately fifteen feet at the front for the landscape garden sculptures that we talked about previously. Zoning permits a zero lot line on the north side. And we've kept back, I think it's five feet from, let me get the right dimensions here, yes. Yeah, it's about just over four feet to the, from the property line to the edge of the building. So yeah, the only, yeah, zero lot line is a north one, so.
So the, the setback is from the westerly boundary of, of the property?
Yeah, well, that, that's the thirty-seven foot to the edge of the building. There is a carport that's at about eighteen feet from the property line. But that's much lower. That's just a single level roof there.
Could, could the setback be switched to the easterly boundary of the, of the property line? I know that's not an easy question to, to answer immediately, but it's just an idea.
Well, that's where we have to have the parking access and it wouldn't be viable off the corner of the lot there on the east side from a transportation perspective.
You, you owe me a coffee. Okay. All right, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to address? Thank you.
Yeah, hi. Is this still on?
Yes, it is.
My name is Colin Wood. I live just across the road from this proposed development. And I think there are three things, so far as I'm concerned. First of all, the look of the building. I, and it's just a few feet, of course, from a revival early English-style church, which is very attractive. I think this building is very attractive. I think the architect should be commended for what he's done on what I think is a very difficult site. So the looks, as far as I'm concerned, actually are something that adds to the neighborhood. And knowing that in Sydney, there are many recently-built attractive buildings, but there are also a few carbuncles. This is not a carbuncle. It's a nice building, to my mind. The second thing, parking, it is an issue. Across the road from this building, I've had cars towed twice and blocking my driveway over the past few years. I often have people half blocking the driveway as if somehow I can lift my car around it. So I think that's part of a wider issue that council might have to address on that block, which of course has twenty-four-hour parking. And people park and leave there and forget about it and wander off and that's it. You can't do much about it. So that definitely is an issue, parking as far as I'm concerned. But it may be a transitory issue because many of the people that park are workers on the construction sites who arrive at six-thirty in the morning, wake everybody up and then go off to work and leave their cars there most of the day. So that's one of the side effects of all this construction that we residents put up with. So a third thing, and one that really is much more to my heart, is the tree that is the corner of Third Street, Noville. It is a large flowering ornamental cherry tree. I've examined it closely twice. It looks quite healthy to me. I have been an issue with this tree because its companion that was about ten meters north, just before the boutique hotel, in front of the five-story apartment building that's being built now. Three or four years ago, when it was first mooted and planned and so on, I came into Sydney, spoke to the people at the planning department. They assured me the tree would stay. That's the companion to this existing tree. Unfortunately, a few months later, it disappeared. And I was quite irate. And the excuse was given that, well, yes, the tree was probably getting old and should come down anyway. That doesn't, that doesn't somehow jive with the reality of trees. It was more convenient for the developer to have that tree out the way so that they could work, work more quickly. In this instance, it seems to me, in this particular lot, the way the tree is positioned on the corner of those two streets, it's, and the way in which the development of the, of the lot can proceed from Oakville Avenue in such a way that the integrity of the tree can be maintained. Now you may say, why am I getting worked up about one tree?
If I could just interrupt you. One, I want to remind you that you do need to bring your, your points now to an end. You're running out of time.
Sorry, I can't hear you. Can you speak up?
Sorry, I didn't give you a time limit, but, but the other point is the tree is intended to be maintained.
I realize that. But if you read carefully, it, it tells though, it gives it an option to take the trees if they think it's in the way.
So council can address that, so just, you've made your point and, and it is in the, in the, in the staff report, so appreciate the concern because I think you'll, you'll find that echoed from other voices as well.
I appreciate that statement. Right, that's really all I have to say. And I hope that this goes ahead, the tree remains and fewer workers park and block my driveway. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who'd like to address this project? Seeing none, I will close the public participation. Mr. Humble, can you just shut off the, oh, thank you very much, sir. And I'll turn it over to committee. Councilor Wainwright?
Thank you, Chair. A question through you to staff and I think I know the answer, but I, I just want to confirm it. The reason that they're requesting a variance as opposed to paying in lieu for the missing space is because the bylaw won't let them? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. The recent amendment to the parking bylaw brought in a cap or a limit for the percentage of spaces that could be paid for in lieu. So this would push them over.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Mr. Garnet, or Councilor Garnett?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, through you to staff. Just to sort of hop on the tree question, when you're reading the staff report, can you, can anybody speak specifically to the concerns about the health of the tree? And what those are? I mean, I'm not an arborist, obviously, but I've looked at the tree quite closely and it looks fairly healthy and it's quite beautiful right now, so I'm wondering what staff sees as potentially damaging to it going forward?
Yes, through the chair to Councilor Garnett. I was not in attendance at the Development Review Committee meeting and it does, it does indicate that the Parks Department may have some concerns of the health of the tree, so I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I can't speak to what those issues are at the moment.
Okay, if I may. Around the accessible parking spaces, I, I have concerns with them and I, I know that the, the architect spoke to people parking, potentially parking in there after hours and it's an accessible space, so that actually shouldn't be done because it should only be for accessible vehicles. Having said that, having met with a resident in the community around accessibility issues and seeing the vehicle that that individual drove, if that individual was to want to visit this site, their vehicle would be almost impossible to navigate in that space. So I'm wondering, do staff have concerns about the ability of larger accessibility vehicles to be able to access these spaces?
No, we don't. The bylaw, like there, the proposed space in the maneuvering aisle meets the bylaw requirements and we did just increase the size of the accessible spaces and the number of them in the bylaw. So this is a good example of how those bylaw requirements pertain to new development in terms of how many spaces are required and what type of spaces.
Yeah, I, I, as far as the actual size of the space, I can see that. I'm just thinking in terms of the actual ability to navigate through into the space. It's quite challenging for somebody who has a larger vehicle and needing to exit out of the side on a wheelchair. And I, I've never driven one, but it looked like it would be, it would take a lot of effort to get in there. So it's just, that's my opinion. But anyways, thank you, Chair. Thank you, staff.
Oh, thank you, Councilor Garnet. Any other questions from committee? Seeing none, then I thank you, Mr. Moody, for your time.
Thank you.
And appreciate your information and thanks to the owners who stepped up as well. And there is a recommendation in the report.
Thank you. I'll move the recommendation that Development Permit Application Number DP-100824 to permit the construction of a four-story mixed-use building and Development Variance Permit Application Number DV-100314 to relax the off-street parking bylaw requirements for the property at 9700 Third Street. Be forwarded to the Advisory Planning Commission for review and comment.
Second. It's moved in second. Any further, Councilor Duncan?
I believe Councilor Rintul and Councilor O'Keefe, because they moved in second, should go first.
Please.
Thank you, Chair. I will acknowledge to having some, some concern with the mass of the, the project on, on the lot, certainly. You know, as evidenced by the need to go through this process with respect to variance, so I, I do have some concern. I'll acknowledge that upfront. Having said that, we do have, you know, a process to review these applications, which is the or, excuse me, the referral to the Advisory Planning Commission. And so I think it's probably prudent that we follow that process and give them the opportunity to weigh in on this project. Thank you, Chair.
Councilor O'Keefe?
Thank you. I also have concerns about the parking and I'll, I'll vote against the motion just because I, when it comes back from APC, I don't know that there's going to be any additional information that would change my mind. And I'm conscious of the ti, the fact that time is money for developers. So I'd rather tell them upfront what I'm not, you know, happy about and give them the opportunity to go address it rather than continue through the APC process. So the concerns for me, again, are the parking. So in this building, there's going to be a gallery, an art studio, an engineering business, a significantly large residential component that we, we here will have family gatherings, which is good. But it concerns me that there's really no parking being provided for any of that. And the suggestion that people can park in the surrounding area, what, what I've heard all term from, and during our council term, is concern for residents in, in that area because there's not enough parking for businesses and so people going to businesses are parking out in the residential areas. So that, that's a concern for me. In terms of whether it fits with our OCP and our zoning bylaw, I'm having a struggle to, to show how, how this fits. So in our OCP for downtown commercial, it, it mentions that new mixed-use developments should establish higher residential densities. And this is, you know, we're, we're not doing that. The zoning bylaw also says that the intent of the C1 zoning is to provide for a mix of core commercial uses with a secondary but significant multifamily residential component. And so this development does not have that significant multifamily development. And I understand why, because there's not, not space there. And as the architect said, if they did have several units there, well, parking would be a problem. And so I guess what I'm left with is a comment that one of my colleagues sometimes uses is that this is maybe a, you know, trying to put a round hole in a square peg. And I don't, I'm not convinced that this is the right development for this particular spot. The other thing I look at when I'm looking at variances, especially for parking, is I'm weighing what's the, what is the potential benefit for, for the community in the neighborhood? And I'm stretched to see what the compelling benefit is for the community. In fact, it's, it's negative impacts, I think. That it'll make it harder for our, the residents around there to, to have parking and for, I think it will attract a lot of business there, which is good. But again, that puts additional pressure on other businesses in that area for lack of parking, so. So I won't vote against the motion. Those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor O'Keefe. Councilor Duncan?
Thank you. I will be voting in favor of this and in this case, it's, I have no problem with the variance. I, I, I think the variance is completely reasonable. The only things that I have a problem with are things which it's zoned for already. So I guess I'll start, I'll start with my decision on, I guess my concerns, even though they're already zoned for simply so that they are passed on to the Advisory Planning Commission, the architects and the owners. The, the concern brought up by the resident who lives behind them, they haven't asked for a height variance. So when people moved into the condo that was behind it, unfortunately, even though the building that was there before was shorter, this type of building at the height that it is built to was, was always possible to be built and we do keep running into this problem. And I know many of my family members have had this problem too, that people don't actually check what is going to be possible in cer, in the areas surrounding them when they purchase a building and understand that what they might have bought that building for might go away. Especially, especially when the town itself is undergoing a building boom. But I know that the architect is here and has heard this and, and the, the neighbors have, have heard this as well and they possibly have the ability to examine the building itself and, and get an idea and maybe speak to their neighbor about how this might affect his exposure. There might be a shadow study, you know, something that can be shown to, to see how that might actually impact. In terms of the variance, I think this actually has a large benefit to the community because it reduces the expectation of car use. We have, this again, single, like, vehicle passenger use is our largest source of greenhouse gas emissions that we have to address in our climate action plan. And we have a group of people who have done everything right according to our OCP and that climate action plan. They have built a live-work unit directly downtown and said, on account of the fact we have built a live-work unit, we don't need a lot of cars because we're building it directly downtown, two blocks from a major two blocks from a major bus route, directly across the street from a moto-car share station, which I use with two children myself. And they, it's a small gallery, they can't possibly have more than one or two customers coming in at the same time. I mean, look at the size of it. It's not like they're building an art museum where they expect to have dozens of people come at once. It sounds like they've moved closer to family. They specifically said their family lives in Sydney. They're not arriving by car, they're probably arriving by foot. If they are arriving by car, they're arriving after hours in the evening and able to use these spots. They can use an accessible spot because they're not expecting customers in the evening after hours. So people, there, there's no conflict with the residential use or out-of-town family that might drive in. And I also know that because the scout hall is just two doors down, there is parking on the street in the evening if there's family coming. I am, I know that business parking during the day is a problem and it is spilling out into these neighborhoods. I work on Second Street, just the next block up. And I know my coworkers that drive have to do the three-hour shuffle. However, I know that the one who, the, the additional car that drives that can't get in the parking spot is because we have an office building that's built for about five or six people to be there. There are only three right now, but we only have one parking space. This gallery is smaller than the office building I work in and is intended to have fewer employees with employees that actually live on-site. So I really struggle with the idea that they're underparked when I know that this exists in existing buildings in our town. And the building that I am in is actually a multifamily building, it has condos upstairs. So not just one family, many families. And yet, we're able to do it. Nobody's driveways that I know of get blocked on that street. So I believe the gentleman neighbor who brought this point up is correct that possibly this is a short-term problem that will go away with parking if his driveway is being blocked. I also know that's not necessarily due to limited parking, that's just rude no matter what. It doesn't matter whether your parking spots are limited or not, you don't block someone's driveway. And, and so I wouldn't want to say this is a parking problem that impacts somebody's ability to build their home and business because other people are already illegally rude. And that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you Counselor Duncan. Counselor Wayne Wright?
Um, thank you Chair. So I, I have a different perspective than my colleague and I do substantially agree with all the points that have been brought up. The thing that is causing me trouble is that I'm expecting the, you know, brand-new building to have significant life. I'm expecting that life likely is going to, lifespan of the building is likely going to exceed the, the, the new owners. And it is a large living space and a very specialized commercial space on the lower levels without adequate parking. And it doesn't meet our bylaws. And if we allow it to go ahead, while it might be perfectly suited to the current owners, when they cease to be the current owners, it is a very weird building without enough parking. And I'm having trouble approving doing that. That's basically it. It's, it's not a live-work building, like it wasn't intended to be. And it, it, you know, we have to think about the future that matches the lifespan of the building as well. So normally, on something like the parking variance, I'd think, yeah, let's let APC have it and then you, we can talk about it. But here, you know, as my colleague has said, you know, time is money. And I'm, I'm also reluctant to put APC through quite a bit of effort if I really don't see myself approving what comes back. So I'm going to be voting against this. Thank you.
Thank you Counselor Wayne Wright. Counselor Garnett?
Thank you Chair. This is, this is a difficult one. I agree with a lot of the points that Counselor Duncan made as well as Counselor O'Keefe and Counselor Wayne Wright. So for me, it's, it, it kind of centers around the, the OCP and the zoning bylaw and extra residential and density. And 4,000 square feet for one family at a time when we're struggling to find housing for so many people is really incongruous for, for me with what's provided in the report. Granted, it would lead to maybe more parking issues, but I see a space like this and it could be designed and accommodate studio suites for people in our community. And that's being lost. So from my perspective, I try to look at variances as in, is there a great community benefit? And I'm not seeing it here. And so I'd be more than willing to provide a variance if this was something that provided the biggest need we have in our community, which is extra housing. And I just see 4,000 square feet and I think, that is a huge amount of space when so many people are struggling to find accommodations. So like my colleagues, I, I'm of the opinion that I, as much as I like to hear from APC, it's, I don't see how this is going to change for me. So I don't want the time to be wasted either and so I won't support the recommendation. Thank you. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Counselor Garnett. Any other first-time speakers? Mayor McNeil Smith?
Uh, thank you Chair and thank you to colleagues for your, for your discussion. At the outset of the presentation, the, the presenter spoke to this being an orphan lot and it is, in terms of its size and, and configuration. And I applaud the, the architect and the owners for what they've tried to creatively do with the property. It is zoned commercial and, and mixed-use and so the benefit to the community is it's a single-story residence at the moment and that there will be ground-floor commercial and upper-story residential. So the benefit is some slight increase in, a very small increase in commercial to the neighborhood. The, the size of the, of the residence at nearly 4,000 square feet does indicate that, uh, and, and the commercial you indicate that the parking requirement would normally be a higher. What's ironic is that our, this council's amendment to the zoning bylaw, putting a cap on the percentage payable for pay-in lieu actually limits the pay-in lieu to one parking space. If we had not made that amendment, and I would look for staff to confirm this, if we had not made, this council had not made that amendment, the applicant could have paid for two spaces in lieu and there would be no variance application before us. So there are many businesses in the downtown and I am an owner of one that has its patrons using a significant portion of street parking that, that turns over during the day. And I, I think this type of business will have a lower, you know, patron demand than many other businesses in, in the downtown. And so it's not unreasonable for patron at some point in time to be parking in the, in the commercial parking zone to frequent this business. It happens virtually every other business in the downtown. Except perhaps very, very small personal, personal businesses. So I, I would like to see this go to APC and, and hear their comments. I, I do have some, some challenges. The, but as I said, the, the irony of this is, is with regards to our, our bylaw. And I, I, I'm sorry, through the Chair, I just would turn to staff if, if what I said with regards to the, the amendment that this council made is in fact true.
Thank you. Mr. Humble or Ms. Verhagen?
Through the Chair, to Mayor McNeil Smith. You know, you're absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think the expectation of higher density, you know, as per our OCP has to be put in the context of this orphan lot. And to expect increased density on this orphan lot, I think is unreasonable. The suggestion of suites is, is perhaps possible, but the parking requirement would only be exacerbated if, if additional, you know, residential units were brought into this, into this airspace. And so I will vote support to, to see it go through to APC. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question through to staff and that is about the, the laneway that exists now. And Oakville is a little bit of a hit and miss of where it is two lanes further to the west. And then when we get between Fourth and Fifth, when we had that development came in on the northwest corner, we lost the space for the extra to make Oakville through, a through-street. And here we have another section of Oakville that is partially two-lane and partially one-lane. When did we sort of get to the part that this is not going to be a through-way street, a two-way street, sorry? Can staff address that?
Through, yes. I'm not, I'm not aware, I can't really speak to when a decision was made to keep this as a grid that it is. With this development, the town would not be seeking road dedication to make this a two-way lane through here. The frontage improvements would be as, as per the bylaw requirements with the sidewalk widened along Oakville Avenue, but traffic would still be passing in a one-way direction.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Humble?
Yeah, if I may, yeah, as long as I've been here twenty-some-plus years, I don't think there's ever been a discussion about the idea of that being a, a two-lane through-way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I, I, I love the look of the building. I happen to, to be a fan of mark, modern architecture and I, I think both the architect and the owners came up with a great-looking building. And in particular also for the size of the lot. Where I run into some problems is the very specific use for this particular building. And I will echo Counselor Wayne Wright's comments. And I think about the future and we're being asked to do a variance on the parking. We have commercial downstairs and we have a large residential. And I, I'm looking to see how this building will be future-proofed with its next, next owners. And because it's such a very specific layout, and, and that really challenges me when I'm looking at this. And I thought about, okay, you know, could we improve density for the number of, of units in here? And I really didn't see this as possible. So a single-family and mixed-use with commercial, I lo, I love that idea. I'm, I'm all for it. I'm just really challenged with this particular design and I'm not going to support it at this point. I think it needs to have a bit more, bit more pencil and eraser on this particular plan. So I'm not going to support it. And I'm going to turn to my colleagues if there are any further questions. Yes, Counselor McNeil Smith and Counselor Duncan thereafter.
Thank you Chair. I did have another comment I wish to make and that I've been aware, you know, keeping track of, of the goings-on in the downtown commercial district, that this was zoned for, for mixed-use. It's at the edge of the, of the commercial zone. The property to, is, is an institution church, but it does in essence go to residential south of that, that line on, on Oakville. And, and over to, over to, to Fourth Street as well. The, and my preference would have been if, if I was on a council of the day previously that, and the zoning bylaw was coming forward, given that this was an orphan lot, I would have made the suggestion that, that this be three-story residential or ground-floor residential be permitted in this space and it would be something that I would consider. Now that would be a variance to our zoning bylaw or it would be a variance of some, some, in some regard because it's zoned as ground-floor commercial. But I, I think that would be an appropriate use. But we see these proponents come forward with something very specific that they are, that they are pursuing. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Duncan?
Thank you. I debated whether it was worth saying anything at all, but I think I will just to have it on record. I'm really concerned at the way the word, the, the concept of the future is being leveraged in this instance specifically because of cars. Again, our climate action plan is very clear. The future is not cars. It, it can't be. And so when we look towards the future and what we need to think of when we're future-proofing our town is thinking about spaces, the flexibility of the space, that's true. That they're building a space that has a very specific use right now because it's being owner-builder. It's, it's an owner-builder for their own custom purpose. But I, I don't imagine that the layout, looking at it, couldn't be used for something else with very minimal renovation or, or, or none at all. And that, given its location downstairs and the fact that, or downstairs downtown and the fact that it does have a three-bedroom house upstairs, which is suitable for families. So it's very flexible in terms of living arrangement. They didn't build, you know, a loft just for a retired couple. They built something that a family could move into and both parents in it could operate something out of. It could one day become a daycare, actually, if I look at it. You know? The idea that we might end up kind of, based, it is an orphan lot and it might be very difficult to redesign, it might be impossible to redesign, meaning that we tank these people's ability to move into town and bring two businesses and grandparents who have family in town, which is exactly the kind of thing we're trying to promote with the OCP is the idea of having families of multiple age groups being able to live in town and support each other because we're worried about, again, cars. And if they do adapt it and manage to keep this use, it means that they're going to be paving more of the property. Again, rainfall, rainfall infiltration is something we've talked about a lot, particularly in this neighborhood. And so we're asking them to put more cement down to bring in, to allow, to encourage more cars to come into the downtown when we know that's against the climate adaptation plan. We know this causes problems with rainwater. And it might just actually discourage people from building exactly the kind of flexible, family-encouraging buildings and, and, and community integration that we're looking for. So I just wanted to register that the vision of the future I'm looking at here, this fits it. And the idea that it's going to be parking spots from our cars, it really doesn't. So I would be very disappointed if this doesn't go through.
Thank you. Counselor O'Keefe?
Uh, thank you. So to, to say that, you know, we have to, the best way to, to deal with climate change is, is to stop creating parking spots. I have an issue with that because the trend that we're seeing is not necessarily that cars aren't going to be here. There might be electrical, electric vehicles, that's what we're seeing now. So the fact that, you know, where we're going now in terms of the future is getting away from gas-powered vehicles, which is a good thing. We're looking at EV bikes, we're looking at electric vehicles. So electric vehicles still need places to park. So, and also to think that within the lifetime of that building that everybody is going to be from the Gulf Islands, from the West Shore, from the whole Greater Victoria area, is either going to be coming to Sydney on, on a bus. I don't think that's realistic within our future. I think it's a good goal. I, I agree that that's a good thing to aim for. But I think not within the lifetime of, of this building. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the, the comments that have been made on that. Thanks.
Thank you Counselor. Counselor Rintul?
Thank you Chair. And, and I've enjoyed the conversation. It is a challenging one in, in my mind as well. But I thank Counselor Duncan, a lot of her comments have really resonated. And, you know, back to my suggestion that we follow a process and we let the Advisory Planning Commission review this and provide their feedback to council. I, I appreciate there's some concern referenced by colleagues here at the committee that, you know, that time is money in the eyes of developers. But I can assure you, there's a lot of money into this already. There'd be an awful lot of money into this if they had to at least attempt to do some reconfiguration, if it's even possible. Staff can correct me, Mr. Jellin can correct me. I think we've got a meeting two weeks from today on the Advisory Planning Commission's schedule with no referrals in the line for that. So you're looking at an APC meeting, I believe, two weeks from today. And, and I expect that likely the applicants would be quite satisfied to see this go to APC. Again, I think it'll be a very challenging discussion at APC and the applicants have heard some of the concerns and they've got a couple of weeks to look at how they present to APC to, to try and address some of those concerns in that forum. But I But I will, again, support this motion with an aim to follow a process that, that we have for variances of this nature. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. If, Counselor Wainwright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, you know, a significant issue here is the parking requirement. And my understanding is the parking requirement doesn't actually have to be met on the site. It's possible to secure parking on a location. There, there are a few things that you can do that the town might reasonably consider as a way of addressing that. I know that there are also some ways like providing moto memberships that have been done to reduce parking requirements. I would strongly encourage the proponents to get creative on that kind of thing. I still have some difficulty with the overall nature of a very large single residence and this, you know, small commercial space being suitable for other purposes in future, even if all the parking were waived. That is what I'm having the greatest challenge with personally. But there are ways to be creative about trying to address the parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Humboldt, if, if the recommendation from staff is not supported this evening, what would be the next step, both for committee and, and the proponent?
Really depends on, on the specifics of, of whether or not council, if it's, if, if the motion's made, if it's denied, it potentially ends there. And, and the proponent then needs to make a decision. Do they come back and potentially make another application with revised, with revised drawings? Alternatively, the committee could, could look to request modification of the plans prior to proceeding to the Advisory Planning Commission. So, council does have, the committee does have options in terms of how they want to proceed, but I think to, to, if, if the motion fails, it's, it's, and there's no other motion that's, that's made or subsequent motion that's made, then it's, it's denied at this stage.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Humboldt. Committee, if there are no other comments or questions, then I'm, we've got the recommendation in front of us. Counselor McNeil-Smith?
Thank you, Chair. And a question through to you to staff and I appreciate, we may not be able to have this answer now, is what would be the necessary reduction in square footage of the residential unit to reduce the parking requirement by one?
Through the, through the chair to Mayor McNeil-Smith. So, that's a, that's a, that's a good question. It's not so much a reduction, and again, Ms. Verhagen could, can jump in here and correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. It's not a reduction in the, the size of the residential unit. The residential unit, it's, it's very clear the parking bylaw requires it's one space per unit. So, really, it's about a reduction in the overall commercial space that would reduce the parking requirements, I believe. And I'm not sure what that, what that amount is. Ms. Verhagen, would you, would you know off the top of your head?
Yeah, you're correct that it would reduce the amount of commercial floor area on the ground floor and not the residential unit.
Sorry.
It might, it might impact the bike parking and it is, it would be possible to have all four required spaces on the site and not exceed the 50% maximum permitted by the parking bylaw. I'm not aware of how much commercial square footage would be lost from the ground floor, though.
Through the chair, thank you to staff. I, I was aware of that and my mistake. And, and I don't have a question about how much the commercial space would need to be reduced. It does, the, the parking calculation was provided in the report, the split between residential and commercial. So, my apologies for that question.
Thank you. All right. Counselor Wainwright?
Sorry, Chair. One more question for staff on the parking. I'm seeing here in the calculation, there's 69 square meters of retail, there's 28 square meters of office. That totals 97 square meters, I guess. And you need one parking space for 40 square meters. So, if there were 17 square meters less, depending on how things were laid out, potentially they would need one less space? Is that correct?
Potentially, yes. We'd have to look at the calculations.
So, I think that was maybe answering the question.
Okay, thank you. Mayor McNeil-Smith?
And sorry, the reason I didn't pursue that is because, quite frankly, would, I, I posed the question to, to my colleagues, not expecting an answer, but just proposed it, is that would, would council, would your decision change if, if the parking requirement was one less because the commercial space was smaller? We'd still have a ground-floor commercial unit, we'd still have an upper-story residential, there'd still be patrons coming to the business and so forth. So, thank you, but I appreciate that.
Thank you. On that note now, I'm going to call the question. We have the recommendation. All those in favor? Opposed? Four opposed. Counselor O'Keeffe, Counselor Wainwright, Counselor Phallett, and Counselor Garnett. Motion fails. Does committee have an altered recommendation? Counselor Wainwright?
Madam Chair, they've, they've paid their application fees. We haven't actually denied it. I think we should give the proponent an opportunity to consider what happened tonight and decide what they want to do. If we deny it, we would be making them reapply in addition to going through that thought process. So, my thought is we should just leave things where they are and allow the proponent to decide on their next steps.
Thank you for those comments. Thank you very much, Mr. Moody, for your time this evening, your presentation, and I thank your, thank you to the owners as well for your comments and look forward to seeing what comes next. Thank you. Committee, we now move on to 7C and let me just get the agenda in front of me. I believe, so 7C is the Development Permit Application Number DP 100830 and Development Variance Permit Application Number DV 100317 at 9775 First Street to vary the maximum exterior size setback and minimum number of stories in order to construct a bicycle storage room. And I believe we have a presentation from developer, Mr. Stephen Duck and also Ms. Sylvia Bonet from Finless &amp; Bonet. Mr. Duck, you have the mic.
Thank you. Good evening, committee members, staff, and attending public. I'm Steve Duck, Principal of Ties Group and here on behalf of Sydney Waterfront Inn and Suites regarding their application for a development permit and its variances to construct a bicycle storage. As we emerge from the health challenges and protocols of the COVID pandemic, businesses are adapting to the world around us. While there's continuing reduction of business travel and the slow recovery of tourism, especially from two of Sydney's entry points, the airport and our connection to our sister city, Annaquarters, the Sydney Waterfront Inn continues to look for new markets and clientele to fill its rooms. Interestingly, through the pandemic, Sydney has seen an increase in cyclists. The recreational activity saw a dramatic upswing through COVID as something couples, families, and groups could do with relative of risk free. In fact, on any given day, cyclists can be seen gathered at one of our local cafes enjoying a mid-ride beverage. The continued, continued development of the cycling infrastructure in neighbor communities like Victoria, North Sanwich, and Sanwich support this growth. The town of Sydney's recent initiation of the Active Transportation Planning Process is indicative of their support for the contributing to this infrastructure. Sydney is, was, and will continue to be a cycling destination. The Sanwich Peninsula is rapidly evolving as a visitor destination with its growing agritourism opportunities such as tasting rooms, farm gate sales, events, and outdoor attractions like the Flavor Trail. All of these are available to cyclists. The members of the Sydney Hotel Group recognize the developing new market and support any new infrastructure which will make Sydney an attractive, welcoming, and safe environment for cyclists. Sydney Waterfront Inn, as a member of the Sydney Hotel Group, promotes its accommodation services as cyclist-friendly and has already seen growth in this guest segment. To that end, they would like to provide further cycling services which contribute to the needed cycling infrastructure as soon as possible. In particular, this is an addition of secure bicycle parking. The proposed bicycle housing will provide a weatherproof, easily accessible, non-intrusive, secure storage facility for guests. The additional bike parking does not impact any other guest or user services provided. The design is in congruence with the existing building. The variances requested are not of significance and are in line with the existing building. And those are the fact that it's one-story versus two, the required two-story and that the setback is far, far more than the required. Currently, Sydney Waterfront Inn provides in excess of its required parking requirements. The bike storage would reduce the properties available parking by one parking spot, car parking spot, still keep its required car, car parking spots above that number, and add up to 15 new parking spots for guest bicyclists. The Inn has already commissioned the line painting company to reinstate a third handicap parking stall. Sydney Waterfront Inn contributes to the active support, is an active supporter of Sydney, its events, and visitor attractions. Sydney Waterfront Inn is a contributor and actively engaged in the cycling community, including the charity Cycling Without Age Society and the local Tuesday Night Riding Group. Sydney Waterfront Inn enthusiastically supports the initiation and development of active transportation to provide a safe, progressive, encouraging, and attractive cycling destination, destination in Sydney and on the Sanwich Peninsula. With this rationale in mind, we would like to encourage the council to approve tonight, without referral to the APC, of its application for up to 15 new safe, secure, active transport parking spots in exchange for one vehicle parking spot. Thank you for the opportunity to present Sydney Waterfront Inn's contribution to active transportation and the continued growth of Sydney as a cycling destination. I remain available for questions this council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Duck. Ms. Bonet, did, welcome, and did you have any further comments?
No, I thank you, Steve. The presentation has been excellent and if there are any questions that I could address that are more on the architectural side, explaining the setbacks, I will be happy to address it. Thank you.
I turn it over to committee. Counselor Rintul?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Duck and Ms. Bonet. Thank you for being here. Just want to clarify, if you could speak to the rationale, your hope with regards to this was that council, excuse me, committee would look to move this forward without referring it to the Advisory Planning Commission. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Could you speak to the rationale around that, please?
Well, the, the variances are minimal at best and, and I don't think there's anything that's going to come back from APC with respect to the single stories in a court, in congruence with the building as exists and essentially adding to the, the lobby that exists. And the setback of four meters is in excess of that of being 15 meters. So, I'm not sure what the APC would have to provide input as the design is essentially what the building is.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other questions to the presenters from committee? Then I will open it up for public participation. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the proponent? And I gather there isn't, so then I thank Mr. Duck and Ms., Ms. Bonet. Is it Bonet or Bonet?
Bonet, thank you.
Thank you. I, I tend to say Bonet, so I thought I'd ask. Thank you.
It's okay. It's okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, members of the committee, and we look forward to the Active Transportation Plan as, and this being part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duck. And good evening, Ms. Bonet. Committee, we have a recommendation on the report. What is your pleasure? Counselor Rintul?
Sorry, if I could ask a question through to staff, just to comment on the implications from staff's perspective of not forwarding this through APC.
Ms. Verhagen?
Through the chair to Counselor Rintul. The design of what's proposed matches the colors and materials of the existing building and I agree the setback, the variances to the setback and to the, to reduce the minimum permitted height, really this is a small addition to an existing building. So, I, yeah, we would, if it was referred to APC, staff would review it against the design guidelines, but it is a small addition to an existing building, so it may not be as important as for a, a new development on a bigger scale.
Thank you. And if I may, Madam Chair, I'll move the Development Permit Application Number DP 100830 and Development Variance Permit Application Number DV 100317 at 9775 First Street to be approved.
Second.
Let's move to second. Comments, discussion from, Mr. Humboldt?
Yeah, again, through to, maybe Ms. Regan can clarify, but we still have the variance process, correct, that we need to go with? So, we need to go to notice for that. So, there is still that process.
Yes, that's correct. If, if council is looking to approve this, then a recommendation recommending the radius mail-out would be appropriate for the variance component.
Thank you for that clarification.
So, I'd be prepared to amend that motion to read approved, subject to radius notification.
Thank you. And the secondary? Moved, mover and secondary, comments first? Mr., or Counselor Garnett?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I, I just, just briefly, just want to applaud the proponent for pivoting, finding a niche in difficult times. I think that's something our community's shown time and again its resilience and this is another example of that. And you've spoken to the fact that, that the roof line is pretty much the same. There's, you know, and anything, any concerns I had, it was nice in the report to everybody. Question came up and it was addressed as I read on, the handicap parking or the accessible parking and the EV charging station being moved and retained. So, I'm more than happy to approve the recommendation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Counselor O'Keeffe?
Thank you. A question through you to staff. In, in regards to the, is, is it a hearing that we're, we're required to go with? And I guess I just need some clarification in regards to, I know the provincial government recent, you know, this past year made some changes about public hearings or going out for public comment not necessarily being mandatory. So, does council have the authorization to, to waive that requirement?
Ms. Verhagen?
Sure. Through the chair to Counselor O'Keeffe. Council would have to consider bylaw amendments before waiving the notification for a single application. And this variance application doesn't need a public hearing. It's the radius mail-out to the 75-meter radius of property owners, tenants, and businesses.
Okay, good. Thank you for that. Thank you. Counselor Wainwright?
Thank you, Chair. I'm just a little bit concerned about the wording of the motion and it was that it be approved, subject to the notification. I think our standard motion is that staff be authorized to advertise the variance, you know, with the radiance and that the comments be brought forward when the development permit is being considered by council. And I didn't get that perfect, but that was a lot closer.
That's certainly the intent.
Yeah. So, if you'd go with that rather than approved, subject to.
And is that confirmed by staff?
Well, yes.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from committee? Then I will call the question. All those in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Thank you. And there are no staff reports, so that I need a motion for adjournment.
To move. Second.
Second. All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Good night.